All right, you should be good, Bill.
All right. Thank you. I will call this meeting to order August nineteenth, twenty twenty five at two forty five P M. And we will be starting with a workshop regarding a discussion around Grand County's responsible recreation. We're talking about this program with Mister Hadler.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, I asked for this to be originally as a discussion item, but I think it actually works better as a workshop. So I appreciate everybody uh working with that. And thanks. I know there's some interested folks here. And thanks for coming. Um. The reason I put this on the agenda is I think there's been a lot of workiness surrounding um. Future of this program, there's a lot discussed about it as far as uh budgeting goes, uh whether there's an appetite to fund it into the future with the uh lack of T R T funds available for it. Um. And uh also there's there are a lot of grants and lots of alternative funding available um that that look like we could we could probably keep this thing going without uh spending a very minimal amount of uh um or or any uh general fund money. Um. So I just wanted to give some clarity to uh those folks that are invested in this, our our department heads and and our responsible rec coordinator, uh Anna, who's here, just so they have an idea about um next steps. Uh. Also, there are a few grants that uh we're going for. Uh, it the la- or I guess it was two commission meetings ago. We unanimously voted for a uh O H V R uh grant to approve that. And I think um this discussion will affect that grant. I think there's some people. Are you guys from the uh? That right? I thought so. Okay, great. Thank you. Um. So so the commission um and we also actually unanimously approved a uh M O U with the Health Department, and I thank Jonathan and Ryan for showing up today, too. Um. So I I think we're sending some mixed signals, and I just wanted to kind of get the record straight. And I also wanted to discuss uh yeah, discuss the set the record straight, figure out where we're going, uh discuss the grants. Um. There's also other grants available, and then depending on the outcome of that conversation, uh talk about next steps for the program. Um. I'll start out by saying that uh this is the we started this program in twenty twenty one. I was involved in starting it out. Um. I think it's been extremely successful. We've uh received uh state accolades, national accolades. We've won a massive um award in the first program, the award of the um we know trace gold standard program. Um. We've uh we've we've gone a long way towards mitigating a lot of the damage uh to trails. I think we've also gone a long way towards uh facilitating um or or just just assuaging a lot of locals' concerns about if you want to call it over tourism, or just we're just a uh a a large impact of tourism on our um on our community. I think that's all very important. Um. We've also have on our agenda today a contract with a branding agency that's going to be redoing our brand. We're going to spend upwards of three quarters of a million dollars to redo the the brand of our area. Um. I'm in favor of that initiative. I think it's great. Brian and I sat on that on that uh committee to select the brand, the branding agency. And one thing that really struck me from those conversations is that uh all those agencies um considered it essential to have um local buy-in and and not just local buy-in from a few, but but like the overall community and make sure that um we as a community and all segments of our community are comfortable with the direction that our branding is going to be going, because we do depend on a tourist economy here without a doubt. Um. So I think that uh so so this this branding getting getting uh buy-in um depends on a message, I think, for a lot of people with stewardship and sustainability when it comes to our tourisms, um our tourism. We have a robust program already in place um that speaks to those things, that that's gone a long way towards alleviating uh a lot of the effects that we've been seeing. Uh. So I think it is my my position is that um I think this surely belongs in the county. Um. I think it 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 fits with our uh with our tourism. Um. Also, I think I I thank Matty for including some of the Utah's Outdoor Recreation Strategic Plan into our into our packet. I read the plan over and I was I thought it was a great plan back in October twenty twenty three when it came out that was put out by the governor's office. Um. And large parts of the strategic plan align exactly with our responsible rec programs. Um. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that. But if you do, I would say probably half of the cardinal directions and objectives uh align squarely with our responsible rec program. This is the strategic plan that is uh given to agencies all over the state to try to um encourage tourism, facilitate it, make sure it's 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 smooth and healthy, um and that we all benefit from it. Uh, in the in Cardinal Objective Two, um Objective two point one, decrease the need for search and rescue support for uneducated, ill-prepared recreationalists. We do that. Objective two point two, foster our sense of stewardship for Utah's outdoors. Um. Objective two point three, minimize conflict between outdoor recreation activities. Uh, and 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 it just goes on and on. A lot of these a lot of these points um fit squarely from this program. So um you guys know my position. I think I've stated it uh in the past. I'd like to see where we go with this. So again, I think the first thing I'd like to do is is hear from the rest of my fellow commissioners. Uh, talk about about what the appetite for keeping it in the county is, and then um and then go through there. I also want to include discussion of the grants, because we had unanimously approved going after some of these grants. There's another grant that I uh became aware of. I think Kendall Law sent us an email about it. It's the um O R I, the Outdoor Recreation Initiative Grant that aligns squarely with the uh strategic plan. Um. I think that's a grant that we're very uh we 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 should easily get, and I think that would help to secure uh a lot of funding for our program going forward. Um. So I'd like to talk about that, and then after we kind of figure out a direction, I would like to uh just kind of have a discussion about how we can facilitate that direction. So I'll you'll pour it. Thank you, guys.
Well, I'll start off. Um, I'm I'm a little disappointed we're bringing this back forward as during the meeting where we approved the amendment to the budget, it was voted on at that time that we would fund the Trail Ambassadors Program at Level Three through the end of the year, provided that they looked for a nonprofit to fall under in the following year. And I don't think anybody up at this level up here feels that there's not a need or a use that they feel in this community. They just don't belong underneath the taxpayers' property tax at the county level. And I know that in the past, we've had innovative ways that we've attempted to fund them through T R T dollars, but that's gone and the movement moving forward would put them directly at the taxpayer's expense where they weren't receiving grants. And again, I go back to the fact that we did come up with an agreement, fund them through the end of the year. And the fact that we're back here having a another discussion around this and that people aren't honoring the agreement that we worked on, why I would say that um it's a little bit surprising. And I I think that there's a definite place for this group in the county, and I think that there's plenty of opportunity for them to be out where the public can support them under a nonprofit. And there's examples all over the state of Utah of these types of organizations falling under nonprofits. Many of them are actually right here in the county. We've got um C N H A that everybody's familiar with. We've got the Friends of Arches and Canyonlands, Moab Mountain Bike Association Rim to Rim. We've got partner that have partnered with the National Parks and with many of the state organizations around here. And this isn't just unique in the state of Utah. It's also used throughout the United States. And so it it was an agreement that we came to when we amended the budget. I'll go back to that again, and I'm a little disappointed that we're back here. There's other things that I'll possibly weigh in on here in the future. I know you're eager to speak, Jock, so please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the agreement that Bill spoke of. I actually, Bill and I talked about that, so I I thought he'd bring that up. So I went back and watched that meeting where we talked about the budget. There's absolutely not an agreement that we fund this for the end of the year and then and then move it out of the county. That wasn't even brought up in the meeting. Uh, what was brought up in the meeting is that we compromised on the amount of the funding. Uh, myself and Mary and others, uh Trish, I think, talked about wanting to fund it at the level one, but uh the the same amount. So the agreement that was reached is clearly, if you go back and look at that, it's at about hour four of that July fifteen meeting that we that we reached was to fund it at a much lower rate uh while we worked on our budget. But there was there was no discussion of of having it uh leave the county. Um. There there are great examples of nonprofits that are doing good work in town, and and I commend them. I've talked to a few of them about the capacity uh for maybe picking up a a trail ambassador type of program, and it doesn't sound like that's an option. So it would probably be uh uh something where it would have to be spun off on its own, which we all know is a pretty difficult endeavor, not impossible. Um. I don't think any of those those fine organizations' missions square is is evenly with our state Recreation Strategic Plan as the Trail Ambassador Program. I mean, that program is is right down the line with a lot of the initiatives um that are uh talked about in the governor's plan from late twenty twenty three. Um. And my understanding is that a lot of uh other entities around the state are are looking to emulate our programs. And again, I fail to see points of removing a program like this from the county uh right when we're going to eat it most. I mean, we're we're about to ramp up our advertising significantly. We have two point seven million budgeted, two almost two point eight million budgeted for this year alone. I can see next year budgeting more. Um. Certain people say that that our our income is directly tied to the amount that we spend on advertising. And if that's the case, then we're about to see a lot more income coming in, and we're also going to see a lot more impact.
Mary, go ahead. Then Mike. Did you have your hand up?
No, 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 yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I I agree with uh Ja, but uh we agreed to find it at that lower percent for the rest of the year, and there was talks about having it go to a nonprofit. There were discussions, but just like Jock said, when you watch the minutes, when you watch the recording of the meeting, that was a part of the budget amendment or the final uh vote was to take it out of the county and move it to a nonprofit. And the Trail Ambassador Program is being immolated all over the country under uh. I have many friends in Missoula, Montana. And when I was up there talking to many of the people that work in the Recreation Department, this was about two thousand, you know, went up there in two thousand and one and talking about the Trail Ambassador and then later ta- talking about to them again, and now they have a Trail Ambassador in their in their community. So it's being recreated elsewhere because they see what we're doing and see it as a positive and a successful program. And I I said this a hundred times, our public lands are the backbone and the bread of this county. If our public lands are damaged or destroyed or hurt, that is going to impact our tourism more than that can, and it won't be offset by advertising. People aren't going to come here if grounds are closed because of human behavior. If they see that, they're going to go, that's a problem there. It's going to be a problem elsewhere. They're not. It's going to have a greater impact on uh slowing down tourism or hurting tourism. And all the advertisement in the world could not uh make up for any damage or any downgrading of our public lands. And study after study after study to show that people look at signs, they read a sign, they walk away from a sign. And they might incorporate it, but oftentimes it just is like it glazes over their face. While like if you have a person standing there and talking about behavior, talking about how things from from going to a great museum, they have people at the door that say, this is how you behave in our museum. They have signs as well, but they recognize the importance of protecting their their resources. Our public plans are picassos. They are so valuable and deserve as much protection as we possibly can give them. Also, this program and everything is helping. It's not that it must it costs this money, yes. But it also is helping us bring a lot of money into our community, into our uh government. Uh, it might not be as much as the Trail Ambassador itself costs, but it's a huge amount that uh using the Trail Ambassador as an example in grants when they're applying for them of what we're doing to alleviate the impacts of tourism is very helpful. Uh, you know, I if I I voted to maintain the funding where it was, if you know, decreased, but I think to take it out of the county uh takes away some of the opportunities and the greater ability to receive grants and funding from state, federal, and other uh nonprofits who give money to to organizations that are working to uh educate and protect. So uh I would, I think it would be a big step backward. I it reminds me what's happening nationally, that we're doing everything to make climate change worse. While everyone knows that it's probably the greatest crisis facing us. And here in the county, we're we're modeling that behavior. We're modeling what's happening at the national level by, once again, making a decision and voting and pushing to do something that you know, is not in the best interest of protecting and taking care of our most valuable resources, which is our public plans.
Yes, Mike. Hmm. Uh, double question. Uh, you said in two thousand and one, uh Missoula, Montana? I was looking towards it. Uh, how do you know how they funded that position? Do you know how?
Combination of a lot.
Combination.
Just like ours.
Okay, uh. Uh, and this goes to uh to Ja, because I I just feel like I don't have all the answers here. But when many departments here have their uh several of those advertising departments are restricted funds. We do know that advertising is restricted funds. We cannot use it for this.
Right.
So statue. Uh, that's why this this originally created or originally started was we were using funds that were designated for other things. But when Trail Ambassadors uh need that need that continued funding, how does that stack up? And I'm going to say in my mind, it doesn't stack up to E M S having their hand out. Uh, but that's also, I mean, E M S has their hand out. Solid Waste has their head out.
Everybody.
Every one of our departments, I all do. And it's it's not, in no way do I think I I think uh getting uh asking this department to be put to or a look towards a nonprofit is a good for us. This is this is is not a good for the total of us, but I don't know. I I scales tip towards I E M S and uh first responders. So it's just how it is.
That rhetorical question, you do want me to?
No, I I I don't know. I don't know how someone else, I'm gonna say you.
Yeah.
I don't know how someone else looks at this when oh, there's so many hands up. And I mean, we all agree on on this.
Well, I think I mean, I I think if you look at all the grant opportunities and you look at what we've got going on, I think we have the opportunity to fund this with using very minimal amounts in the general fund, like like probably less than fifty thousand dollars. And if you look, if that budget as a whole, what's our budget, forty million? I mean, that's a that's a microeconomic amount. And there's and we can I mean, there's there there's shades of gray with what what everybody needs. I mean, there's, I I think I think that's such a small amount. I I personally don't want to fund it with too much taxpayer money. I'm willing to put a little bit on the line, but you know, not 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 a massive amount, definitely not the amount to which we did before, but I think I think it leverages our money and enables us to bring in, you know, maybe a half a million dollars from out of state that that's going to money coming into our community. You know, that's that's money well leveraged.
Well, and not to rope you guys into this, uh, it's about how much does Health Department contribute? Or is it?
For now, yeah, fifty thousand stuff.
Well, I mean, with the Health Department contribution alone, I know other entities do. They can fund that grant. I mean, and take it under under a nonprofit, like with I am with third funds only.
Want to be careful engaging the publication, Mike, because we're not doing that. And then I'd also like to make a note that we're going to wrap up at three.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bill.
Because we have a closed session, so I'd like to make sure that everybody gets to be heard and that we're careful and consider.
Don't want to. I was looking at John, sorry.
I know. And so I'm going to go with Melody and then Brian, and I see your name, Trish.
Well, I thought part of moving this to the three or to two forty five was so we could hear from the state O H B people, was that not part of it? So and I think we should listen to what they had to say before we run out of time. That's what changed it.
Um.
But that's.
Was that the plan that they were you guys were planning on speaking? Wait.
I'm just.
That was the first I've heard.
No, it was the plan speaking. Okay.
Yeah, I I I'm just here to listen.
Okay.
Thank you. Um. So then I'll go to Brian and then over to Trish, and then I I will make the note to the
Yeah.
Yeah, if you've got other things.
I just, yeah, I was going to keep it running out of time, and they wanted to speak, we can let them. But um, I, you know, I am in favor of all the work the Trail Ambassadors do. I think that they do an amazing job, and it's an important piece of public lands. However, I think if there's any way that we can um assist them into their own, so if they don't fit in any of the nonprofits that Bill mentioned, I think that their own nonprofit would be the best. They can they can control what they do. They could have a mission statement. They don't have the county. They don't specifically have the politics, and that's what I'm concerned about is, you know, they're they're a point of contention in the community. And unfortunately, that's the case. And so by putting them as their own nonprofit, they can go out and do their thing. People can support them, and I think we need to put a working group together to figure out what they need and how we can help them. And then that's what what I think we need to do to go forward.
Good idea.
Bobby, Brian, and then Trish, please.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, I mean, it's 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 impossible not to recognize the Trail Ambassador's benefit, you know? I mean, I've been to a lot of their events. Um. I know that the work that they do, and I and I know it's good work, you know, but some of the things that have been brought up today is you know, is you know that they're we're talking about the state, and and I haven't seen the state reach out and say, hey, let's go ahead and take over this program. Um. I haven't seen other groups, you know, reach out um and say that they would like to go ahead and take over this program. Those would cut. Those would be conversations I would love to have as well. Where are people who are looking to keep this to keep this program?
Um, state does that through grants.
Your grants. And so let's talk about those grants. So the grants have been very a lot less competitive prior to now. As things have uh as our uh revenue has dropped, these grants are going to be much more competitive coming into the future. Right? Because not only have it has our revenue dropped, but we also lost that funding source for them, which was the T R T. So now they're going to be jumping into other uh other locations where we could have funded. Right? We have, I mean, one of the things I look at is look at our motorized trails, right? We fund, you know, and these are great optional grants that come on in that we use to fund our non-motorized trails. And I think that last year we spent something like two thousand dollars to fund our motorized trails. We need to start looking at making sure that we're taking care of all of our trails out here. And I think that once we start putting all that in, that we're going to see it's going to be a lot more competitive coming into this budget, looking for how we're going to be matching those grants, because I and I and I agree that, you know, every dollar that we can get that comes in is fantastic for this community, right? If we can spend one dollar.
Most of them are match.
What's that?
Most of them are match grants.
The O R I that's on the consent agenda today is a hundred thousand dollar match grant. It's not for Trail Ambassadors.
In kind.
In kind. It's still a matching grant, right? These are still matching grants that are coming through. Do you mind if I finish though before we're gonna we're going to go back and forth? I was kind of polite and did not interrupt you when you were speaking. I'd I'd appreciate the same. Is that is that acceptable to you guys?
I I
Okay, I just want to I just want to make sure I'm playing by the same rules. That's all I'm asking. Is if if I'm allowed to speak, you know, I mean, you know, and and listen to you without talking, I'd like to I'd like the same respect back. Thank you. Um. You know, and so the end of the year is what I thought we were funding this through. I've heard there were conversations um that we were only going through the end of the year, and this was going to be going to be uh us helping them trying to find a nonprofit afterwards. If that's if that's not what it was, I mean, I think Mary also had that maybe had that understanding. Um. And I don't know who else here at this commission had it. Um, Mister Tiger?
Yes.
Was that your understanding as well?
That was my understanding.
Okay, so I just want to say that there was there was an understanding that this was going to happen. And just even to the point of this meeting right here, I mean, I was under the impression that we were going to have a workshop today that was going to talk about special events. Right? And I keep saying this over and over, and I sound like a broken record. We need to we need to grow our top line. And I think that by improving the special events project uh process, that is going to improve our top line. Right? And then maybe once we have our top line going up again, right, then we can start affording some of these other neset or some of these other niceties that we like to have. But right now, I think we're in the middle of trying to figure out how we're going to fund essential services. There are some, we're going to have to make some tough decisions on what we're going to be doing in the budget. Um. I don't know, you know, the the Budget Advisory Board is ready, but I think that we're all going to be sitting here making some tough decisions and going through and trying to say that we're going to fund this thing right now, I think is jumping way ahead of the is jumping way ahead or putting the car the cart way ahead of the horse. Um. A couple of things that Mary said, you know, um, you know, first off, she mentioned that the public lands is our most valuable asset. And I disagree with that, right? I think the people of Grand County are our most valuable asset. Right? I really do. I think it's the people here that are most valuable asset, right? And right now, there are people here who can't afford a lot of things. And to be going forward and putting money into something that is that is a nicety, and believe me, it's it is a nicety. I know. I mean, the uh the messaging that the Trail Ambassadors puts out is very effective. Right? It's also very expensive, and I think that that's the reality of what it is. Um. When the Trail Ambassadors came here, you know, there was a different level of growth, right? We were seeing a large, we were seeing this large intake of people coming in. And this was a reaction to that right now. Right now, we're on the opposite end of that scale, where we're seeing a decline in our growth. Right? And I think the idea of us putting them into a nonprofit, just like we work with all of the nonprofit, or not all of the nonprofits, but many of the nonprofits that Bill mentioned, they can still use the county as a resource, right? It just, I, from my opinion, I I think that it should not be county um county run department.
I'm going to go to Trish and then Mary.
Yeah, I'll try to be quick. Um, I'm in support of keeping it in the county. I do think we can find funding to fund the bulk of it. I have started nonprofits, and I started a nonprofit that specifically was revolving around something similar. I started the Friends of Indian Creek. It is not that easy to start a nonprofit, and it's really difficult as a startup nonprofit to get grant funding. Because you don't have the matchability, you don't have that umbrella over the top of you that is security to those grant to those funders. So I think to keep it under Grand County allows them the ability to get more grant funding and and to roll. Um. And I think in the end, it'll bring us more accolades. I think this is an amazing program. We are leading a charge in the Intermountain West with what we're doing, and I think it's something that we should be very proud of. Do I want taxpayers to pay for it? I want visitors to pay for it. You bet. I don't want to have to pay for it, but I'm willing to pay for a little bit of it, because the reality is that we are forcing, we want people to be here, and with that promotion, we should also be ready to mitigate the impacts of those visitors and be willing to throw down a little bit to mitigate that impact. And again, I think it being under the umbrella of the county will allow them the ability to fund pretty much themselves. I I did write one of the out- outdoor grants, um, you know, under the auspices of the county, and it helps, right? It helps a lot, because, you know, we just have that power to match. We have that power of in-kind matches. Um. So that's that's where I sit. I respect all of your opinions about this, but you know, we we um, yeah, it was, that's.
Thank you, Mary.
Oh, yes. Uh, what I I just wanted to clarify, what I meant by a greatest asset, it is our greatest, well, our greatest or our number one economy is tourism. And tourists come here because of our public lands. Without our public lands, the tourists wouldn't be coming here, and all of the community and all of our residents would hurt. It would destroy our economy. It would destroy our economy. And I'd like to hear what Maddie has to say. She's had her hand up, yes.
Did anybody else on the commission?
I I I have one thing I just want to bring up.
I I did want I want to hear what Maddie has to say, but I also think I I mean, I listening to you guys, I see the writing on the wall. It sounds like it sounds like more of us than not are looking at at moving this um out of the county. And and if that's the case, then I would like to use some of the rest of the time to explore uh Melody's suggestion of forming a working group to to see how we could move this forward. But I would like to hear from Maddie if she's an integral part of this and this affects her.
I know. And then Brian, you have further?
Um yeah, just just since Wade's here, you know, I just kinda wanna talk about the OHB program that they have going um real quick and where that that department might win. You know, if anybody has any ideas or has done any research on that.
I mean, I'm pretty familiar with it. I I again, I think that's an integral part of the part of the program. I think I think the OHB and off-road um outreach is is great. And I also think that that uh as far as I know, that grant also includes a um a uh uh a trail work piece as well, that they that that uh position would help to uh maintain uh motorized trails as well. And I think that's a great initiative too.
I have been a part of conversations also with Wade and others at the state about the need here to um try and balance out the motorized with the non-motorized. We certainly have been um funding heavily on the non-motorized side for some time. So we have had multiple discussions about how to use the state crew as well as our own crews to bring about a little better balance and and look at ways to fund, seeing that that's done adequately, I guess, would be perfect.
And I think what I was asking is is the um the trail ambassador uh OHB program. Um is there an appetite here for it to be moved under the sheriff's office that was not deputized?
I haven't thought about it.
I I I suggested that in the past. I I think that that's a a good way to go if um we want to try and keep the motorized portion of it somewhere that seems to be ultimately grant funded that program. And I I don't know what the dollar amount that would cost the county would be paying for that to remain here, but I I've suggested that in previous meetings with Maddie and I think Jacques was there, not maybe not, but I
I I agree on the Maddie. Uh is this, has there been any talks about the sheriff's appetite to do so?
Um Matt, how do you even come up now if you'd like? I just wanted to get through all of it.
Sorry, jumping into weeds. Maybe that's something you guys can discuss in yeah, um your little, you know, the working group that you guys want. It's just
Sure.
One of the things that I talked Maddie about, I just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, um so my hat is raised primarily for that because um I would like to thank the commission for having a conversation about this because I think on that July fifteenth meeting, um you know, there was a mention of this issue. And I know that there's as staff, I know that there's sort of an appetite to move the program out of the county. But so far, it's answering questions from the public. Um there wasn't maybe enough information out to answer people's questions. And so as a staff person, I prefer that information coming from the commission rather than maybe my interpretation of it. Uh and so one of those questions that has come up is again, maybe some clarification about uh the trail ambassador program, which is primarily education. And then specifically the OHBR grant that was on the same agenda as the discussion occurred. So um the discussion about moving the program out of the county and then also a unanimous vote for that grant application. And so I think there's some questions about because that grant application includes education and trail work, and there's potentially an appetite for more motorized trail work. Uh what the commission feels about that. Uh and the selection for those grants is tomorrow. So I think that's like a a time sensitive question. Um and then also thinking about um, you know, twenty twenty six, you know, it seems like um everyone's probably united on there being funding coming from somewhere. Uh it'll make it easier to move it out of the county if it comes funded because nonprofits are gonna be, it's gonna be easier for them to take something on if it has a little bit of certainty with it um versus taking a gamble on something that's that's not funded. Um and so the uh most immediate thing is the the ORI grant, which um is the Outdoor Recreation Initiative Grant. That's the one that is currently funding uh Blood Springs. And Bill's actually on the selection committee for that. Um so that deadline is at the end of the month. And so thinking about this awkward timeline of ideally the future home may be applying for that, but we don't have that figured out yet. And then this deadline is due at the end of the month. I'm looking for maybe a little bit of help figuring out what to do and if there's a way that we can still apply to this and take advantage of that opportunity, but also not um, I don't know, like commit the county to something that uh you know, they don't want to do. So I I'm just looking for a little bit of help on that. And that might be a working group to kind of look over that grant application and and help make those decisions.
I would um say that we've probably spend the remainder of the time here and put together a working group. I I don't wanna run over the three thirty mark because we've got other important business as well to discuss. So I'm open to anybody that wants to start off on that working group discussion, John.
Yeah, I I I don't have any working group. I think I've been intimately involved with programs since the inception. Um and motivated to to keep it going.
I also like to be on that working group. I I wanna I'll be on that working group.
Hey. Um and I'd assume uh Maddie.
Maddie, of course. And then help department.
Yeah, if you guys are willing, it'd be great to have it and join in.
Awesome.
Anyone else you guys can think of that might be um really uh essential?
I was gonna say some of our land management, Anna.
Anna, okay.
Yeah.
And Carrie too, like just BLM, would that be?
Would be interested. I would put Jennifer Jones down.
Okay, that's great. I can. And then just just a reminder for the commission, this is a workshop. So if you guys want to formalize it on the next commission meeting, you guys can put out feelers to see who wants to be on the working group. And then formalize it with the in a subcommittee if that's what you guys want to do.
It I mean, it sounds like this 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 grant that we'd be looking at to help get this whole thing um moved over is due at the end of the month. Could we form an ad hoc right now, just the three commissioners to to move forward with? Um you guys would have to
Trying to make some progress. You guys would have to vote to suspend policy.
As a commission up here, we would have to.
At a minimum, I mean, it's really not, it's it's not on for an action item. Uh it doesn't stop. I mean, I I I mean, again, we've we've had uh staff has had discussions regarding the next steps of the program and um that's been calm admin's office, myself and others uh have talked about the topic. But I don't know if you guys are wanting to create a formalized subcommittee. If you're looking at a formalized subcommittee, that's where it's a little bit tricky.
Could we do that at the next commission meeting and still give uh Maddie a thumbs up to go for that grant? And knowing that our working group will help facilitate that?
Well, I think that I think that that department can already apply for the grant, then they could just rat you guys could just ratify it at the next meeting. We're just trying to kind of delineate.
Oh, for sure.
Mission action with staff versus kind of off books type. So just point that out.
Yes.
Well, I and I would assume that any grants that they went through, we we just be a pass through agent for them. So
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Of the grant and then it would go wherever they went unless we in this this OHB OHB one that you're looking at. So depending on what they decided to do as far as the county.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'm wondering, you know, do we want to put a action item on the next commission meeting regarding formalizing that we are moving this out of the county so that it's um clear to everybody or where where do we want to go moving forward?
Make some decisions. That would be my opinion. We can formalize it.
If you prefer that bill, I mean, then
I I along as everybody, we're all clear on where we're moving forward from here, what I don't see a need for it, but I'd leave that to others if they felt otherwise.
Well, and again, with today, no, no action can technically be be conducted by the commission in a working in a workshop. So nothing should without any direct action, status quo will continue until status quo is changed by the commission body.
Then we probably need to put a action item on the next
Whoever wants to to make a change from the status quo, they would have to put something on the agenda, make that make that change. So if that's what they want to do, they can put it on. If nobody wants to do that, then nobody puts it on there.
Yeah, let's put it on there. Then it's clear. Anybody else have comments?
I didn't.
Yes.
I I just ask, uh just because I think there has been a lot of murkiness around this. I I just want to ask Maddie and Anna if there's enough clarity going forward for you guys to to do what you need to do.
Um it would be good to get a temperature about the OHB portion. Because I think that's gonna be a factor that the committee tomorrow is considering.
You mean you mean where we might take it? Like if we want to try to keep it in the county?
It I guess, yeah, if if the commission views that portion of it as part of the trail ambassador program, a kind of part of that package, or uh if that is sort of a separate issue because there's an interest in motorized trail work.
Right.
And that's just a question I don't feel qualified to sure answer on behalf of.
Yeah, um I'm open to whatever.
Yeah, and I I don't have a, this isn't a judgment, but why, I mean, why particularly the sheriff as opposed to maybe Rhodes or something like that?
I just supervision? I I don't know. I mean, I I haven't spoke with anybody, Rhodes. We've talked previously with
Because like it falls under that perp view to an extent.
Okay, you know, I mean, whether you're out there talking to people.
I wouldn't want to speak for Rhodes, but I know in the past, the sheriff was brought into that conversation and not problem with it, but um we need to explore that. I'm totally open to it.
So are if if we keep, so Maddie, what we're talking about is keeping the the uh motorized component with the added uh trail work um factor in the county and spending the non-motorized, I guess you could call it part of a responsible recreation out.
Um and that's that's the question. And the reason for that is because for the grant committee to make that selection, that's helpful information to know if they're if they're funding something that's gonna stay in the county or that has the potential to change after they have approved their grant application.
Right.
I would say, how do you guys feel about keeping it in the county? I I think I'm I'm okay with keeping it in the county myself.
Right. Sorry.
Sure. Yeah, I would want to know the fiscal portion of that, that the county is gonna suffer, I would say. But yes, Quinn, go ahead.
I was gonna ask if if does it, you Maddie, do you have a feel for its success one way or another? Is it a better chance of being funded if it's in the county? Is it a better chance of success if it's with the trail ambassadors?
I would say it has the greatest chance of success wherever the staff would get the most support.
Okay.
And so that might and and so probably what I would recommend is having some conversations in that working group, maybe with those staff. Uh because that might be a factor in the decision. Good.
Do you want the answer now or do we want to come to the working group? That's that's where I'm asking from.
I guess.
By staff, just I'd like to weigh in too. The what what I'm considering is a staff motorized trail ambassador moving over there. I believe that whether it's the road department or it's the sheriff's department, they have staff that can take care and handle that. So I'm I'm not talking about moving a whole section of staff over there. I'm talking about an individual.
Have we talked to Rhodes at all?
Oh, I have.
No, I just that just it's That's why I was asking.
Okay.
There's been an
Yeah.
There was something that wanted to be brought up.
That's twenty nine two.
I think Jameson's already clear that it's not an issue. I I just think they want to explore the the highway department. So I think it's a the working group discussion moving forward, working groups.
I think that's, I mean, the working group, you can talk about that. Talk to Bill and James about it, right?
So I guess we're kind of consensus of it would stay in the county, just for Maddie's information, that the OHB piece.
At least explore it.
Right.
The, yeah. Direction, I would think, in the working group.
Trying for that via grant application knowledge. Trying to keep the motorized within the county is the general consensus.
Okay.
At least the path forward.
All right, anybody else have anything else? I'm gonna say then that we will close this workshop at three thirty. And we have a closed section on the agenda. Does and yes, Mike.
I'd like to make the motion to go into closed session to discuss the character, professional competence or physical or mental health in an individual.
Motion by Commissioner McCurdy, second by Commissioner Mark. Analysts, um all in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Glenn, I will let up.
Bye bye.
With the recordings and the speaker. Did you want me to turn?